Okay, my clock says six thirty and I see in the room and online we have a quorum, so I'm going to call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda this evening is approval of our consent agenda. We have vouchers totaling eight hundred and four thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars, twenty-six cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Okay, then second is our minutes for our July eleven, twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, then I'd accept a motion to approve our consent agenda as submitted.
I still move.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move into our public comment section and Ronald, is there anything you got for us tonight? Okay, well, we're glad to have you. And I don't see anybody online, so we'll move on into our business items. Uh, first item is, uh, is consideration of ordinance thirteen seventy-four authorizing the city in to enter into a lease purchase agreement for equipment purchases, and I will state that item two is redundant to item one, so basically we're accounting for both items one and two in this conversation. So, Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is a lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank for the remaining, uh, equipment. It's kind, we kind of broke that into pieces this year. Uh, we've got the half of the heavy brush truck, which we have, uh, approved already and the tandem axle dump truck, which is street department, we've already, already got that in service too. Um, and then the replacement sprayer for the golf course, which also we've gotten early, it came in early. Um, so this actually just allows us to do the lease purchase on all those pieces of equipment. Uh, the total is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two forty-nine, thirty-four cents, term for five years at five point seven eight interest. Interest rates are a little higher than they were earlier in this year. Um, no payment for advanced or no penalty for advanced payments, so we may look at kind of accelerating those payments as we move forward. Uh, we've kind of looked at a couple of other places uh, where we have existing lease purchases, we may actually end up buying out some of those a little early and a couple of other places too, so. Everything in here is necessary. It has all the provisions to accommodate us for the, the applicable statutes, uh, for municipal lending. And so, uh, if you prove this, you'll, you're authorizing the lease purchase agreement, which was, uh, I broke out a section two there too, but so if you approve it, it funded, well, it'll get funded on the fifteenth of August and payments will start on the fifteenth of September. As far as where that money comes from to pay those, the, the reserve fire, uh, fire equipment reserve, excuse me, pay for the fire truck and then um, the equipment reserve funds, we both, uh, we've increased those fundings for next year in the twenty twenty-four budget to pay for the rest of those. Through the, but through the general fund, but it's through that, that equipment reserve fund, so we've got a couple others, those, both those are non-budgeted, so they don't actually impact uh, tax rates or anything like that, so. We're recommending approval or adoption of ordinance thirteen seventy-nine.
Any questions?
Is it thirteen seventy-nine or thirteen seventy-four?
Thirteen seventy, uh, oh, thirteen seventy-four is what's listed. Let me check real quick.
It's in the packet is thirteen seventy-nine in your memo.
Yeah.
But it's thirteen seventy-four on the actual ordinance.
Check our list real quick.
It's up to the city clerk, which is the right number, so.
Thirteen seventy-four.
Thank you. Right, the wrong one.
I moved, I'll approve ordinance thirteen seventy-four.
Hey, we have a motion by Councilman Lowen. Is there a second? Councilman By seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen seventy-four is hereby adopted and, uh, we will, uh, the mayor will sign. Thank you very much. Is there any equipment that we're waiting on yet?
We haven't.
Does this cover everything that, holders, everything else?
We actually got the, um, park mower that you guys approved at the last meeting, it came in about a week ahead of schedule, so it's in service already as well.
Excellent. Well, it's important to have the right equipment and I'm glad that we've got that tandem, especially got that tandem truck and also that brush truck.
Yeah.
Is gonna be very handy when this kind of weather, when it gets dry and hot, the wind blows and.
Yeah, and that, that truck, uh, they were saying the first week of August. We should have delivery on that.
Well, that's next week.
Next week.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, item three is consideration of the retainer agreement with Napoli Schkolmick P L L C to join the Kansas PFAS cost recovery program, Mr. Styles.
Mouthful, yes. Uh, so we've got several documents attached to the PFAS, it's a national settlement for chemicals, um, that producers like three M make their they get into the contamination of, of water and wastewater streams, uh, their synthetic chemicals usually used to make things, uh, fire resistant uh, or heat resistant, stain resistant. Um, so if you ingest a large amount of those, it has lots of potential, uh, negative cell, uh, health side effects, including cancer, increased risk of certain types of cancer. Um, so we've had these in our system before, we've tested and treated for them, uh, before, so uh, joining this is, it's kind of a, it's not a class action lawsuit per se, it's a, it's a cost recovery program, it kind of works the same way. Um, but this is the National Rule Water Association, Kansas Rule Water Association are both parties to this. Uh, and they're encouraging all their members to, to join, join the agreement and have this retainer, uh, retainer agreement signed off on. Um, so of course, there's no initial cost to us. Um, but as, as settlements come in, uh, we would receive a portion of that, of course, the attorneys, there's twenty-five percent attorney's fee for that. And then, uh, there's also related fees that could, you know, amount to, to, to a significant amount of money, depending on what that ends up being. Uh, so at the end of the day, you know, the example that they show in there is that it'd be about sixty-five dollars for every hundred dollars of settlement money. So, you know, that's sixty-five percent, but it's sixty-five percent of money we wouldn't recover if we were not as part of the, part of the agreement, so. Um, we're recommending that we move forward with the retainer agreement. Um, and, and see what we get, uh, like I say, we have tested and had these in our system before, so.
Any questions?
Well, this is the idea that you recover costs if you have to pay to, um, work with this stuff.
Right, yeah.
So, again, just, just as, as a matter of clarification. Is this considered a lawsuit?
Not technically.
Okay.
It's cost recovery, um, so the, those companies are, are are settling a lot of these, um, having a lot of these settlements nation, nationwide, so companies like three M are paying out. Uh, usually gets divided up by states and then you know, down from there to systems, so it's not a lawsuit technically, but.
Is that a concern?
No.
Okay. All right. No, I, I.
I understand how it worked.
Sure. Okay. I know, you know, that in, in our community, there are people that have, uh, that have, uh, as a matter of faith, you know, and never, that, uh, you know, just are, don't want to be involved in lawsuits, I get, I get that, so. You know, I just want to put that out there. And then, uh.
Hey, I was here with the hospital thing.
Well, I wasn't necessarily pointing at you either, I know, but I know we have, we have a lot of, of our constituents that that feel that way, and so, yeah. I think we have to keep that in mind. Have you had a chance to review the agreement?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, does nothing in there of concern?
No, it's, it's the standard. Word of it.
Got it. Any other questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to consider entering into the retainer agreement with Napoli Schkolmick P L L C to join the Kansas PFAS cost recovery program. Would somebody care to make that motion?
Well.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will move right along into our discussion items. First item is twenty twenty-four budget draft, Mr. Styles.
Uh, nothing special or particularly different about this than what we've looked at last week and our, our last meeting. Uh, I did finish out the utility department, so you can kind of see what those look like in there, um. Nothing, nothing groundbreaking or earth shattering about any of this, still the same assumptions that we discussed previously. Um, the mill levy stays the same, nothing has changed there.
So we're still looking at a, about a mill and a half reduction?
From what we passed last year, correct?
But exceeding the revenue Detroit.
And also exceeding revenue Detroit.
And as per our action last meeting that had notice has gone out.
It has. It has been served to the county clerk.
Got it. Any questions regarding the budget draft?
I would say the only thing, I think we talked about it last time because the water was in there, um. The only thing that's a little unusual is the water department has basically a million dollars more, uh, budgeted in for next year and as regards to the
Forgive.
Yeah, uh, it has to show up on there, so there's a revenue and an expense on that.
Okay. Well, I know that there are those that would say that, uh, you know, that, that, that call, I'd like to refer to this as a shell game or, or some game that we politicians, if you will, play to, uh, hide our money grab from the taxpayers, but, uh, I would say that, uh, I think we all realize that we've worked really hard to keep our mill levy managed, uh, we don't control what the county, uh, uh, assessors value or place our valuation at, but at the same time, I think we can all agree that to maintain a level of service costs have gone up across the board. And, you know, just, we're not talking about adding new services or adding different things, we're talking about maintaining the high quality level of service that our taxpayers have come to expect. And that just costs more, you know, I wished it didn't. I wish it didn't cost more, but it does. And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we've come up with a budget that actually reduces our mill levy a little bit. But I also realize that we're, we're gonna spend more money and, you know, that's just hard, you know, it's hard, hard to, hard to get around it, I s- I would think. I'm not hearing from anybody that says they want us to reduce the level of service that we're providing, any, any of you guys? Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on to, uh, trash out of town rates or out of town trash rates or rates for trash that's out of town.
Sir.
Mr. Styles?
Yeah, so we mentioned it at the last meeting, Waste Connection notified all the homeowners basically east of town, uh, that they were gonna discontinue their service in the middle of July, so gave them a couple of weeks. Uh, we jumped, well, we were asked, uh, by several of the homeowners off of one ninetieth, that little collection of homes over there between that and Jade, uh, or industrial, um. You know, if we could, we could pick up that trash, that trash service, and so we said, yes, we'll do that, um, with caveat that we may, may have to change the rate. Uh, we don't have an out of town rate for trash, we do for electric, that's the only other utility we serve out of town. Um, but we don't have it for trash, uh, Ag Service also called us said, hey, we're, we're in the same boat as these folks, Waste Connection's leaving us kind of high and dry on this, and so would you be willing to come and take our service? Or pick up our service, so. Uh, we did that, we said, okay, we can do that, um. Again, with the caveat that we're probably gonna have to look at the rate because they're, they're a couple of miles off of where our normal route is, so. Um, you know, we, we, we started looking at that and so as I mentioned, we have an electricity rate that's for out of town and it's got basically a seventeen percent surcharge, uh, on that base fee for servings, receiving service out of town. Um, so we basically just took that same kind of rate structure and said, okay, seventeen percent, what's that look like? Um, so that would make residential trash service, um, it would go from eighteen twenty-five to twenty-one thirty-five. Uh, so a couple of dollars there, three dollars there, I guess. Um, and then for ag services, they, what they have now is a, a three yard dumpster that picks up once a month. Uh, so if we applied that, that same rate charge, uh, it would end up being fifty-six dollars a month versus forty-four forty-four twenty-five, well, actually forty-eight twenty, uh, forty-eight seventy-five with the recital charge, so. And I think honestly, both those rates are, are less than what they were playing with Waste Connection, so I don't anticipate there being any issue with them saying it's too expensive, but it, it does allow us to, to recover some of those costs because it does off our normal route. Uh, we do have to go down, especially with ag services, we have to travel out, out of town, off our normal route to get to them uh, and service it, so, you know, we're we're, we're, there, there's, the idea, I guess, with the out of town rate is that it's designed to compensate us for the resources, the extra resources we have to expend over the course of a year to to go in and get this trash from people. Uh, but then it also provides some benefit for the customers who live in town, you know, they're getting that and they're paying taxes and other fees associated with, uh, maintaining that utility. And so there's, there's some small benefit for them to keep, to keep it in town, for being in town, I guess it's, it's sort of a benefit for them. Um, when we talk about annexation, usually one of the things that causes an annexation to come in, for somebody to come into the city is that they need, you know, utility service. Um, and so there's, there's a reason why you kind of put a premium on that out of town service, so. That, that, all that being said, what we're looking at is, you know, just applying the same logic we do with our electric rates and, and saying, okay, here's, here's what we think we can do with that, so. Um, you know, I guess we're just putting it out there, if we want to do that, or if we want to make any change, we'd have to do an ordinance change to set up a rate for out of towners on trash, so. Um, we're just putting it out there for discussion, is that something you wanted to do? Uh, is seventeen the right, the right number? What, what do you, what do you guys want to do with that, I guess?
Questions? I guess I would say is the right number is the number that, that, uh, is required to, to cover our costs. And I don't know that that necessarily is based on a percentage. You know, I'm, I'm, if we're gonna do an ordinance, then what I would, uh, what I would really appreciate seeing is uh, you know, just have our trash folks put in a little thought, you know, about what they think that's gonna add to their cost. And then let's do it on, based on cost, not okay, you know. To me, that makes sense, I don't know, how, how's council feel?
No, it includes a time or waste people involved and everything else, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure that, uh, you know, that, uh, they would rather pay a little bit more than, uh, we be annexed into the city, but, you know, I guess that could be an option as well.
They want to, sure.
You know, if they want to pay, you know, city of Hillsborough rates.
Mm-hmm.
We, we'd welcome them into the city of Hillsborough, but I'm guessing that that's not the desires of those folks living out.
They should get a new road out there.
Well.
Yeah, that's when wear and tear on that, on, on the truck will be for a bad road.
Right.
Yeah, we can, we can put together some actual costs, we're, you know, it'll be an assumption. Um, you know, the time and I think probably the time and you know, there's gonna be fuel.
Time and distance.
Time and distance.
Yeah, that would be the thing.
We'll have to figure out what that actually looks like and then you know, probably the, the bigger question is what's, what's the service territory you want to look at, I, I personally, and I I think we've got this on there too, to talk about. Well, what we gotta figure out, I, you know, I think where we're at is we want to stay within just those customers, I don't think we want to wander too far outside of that, even ag services a little bit further than we probably want to go, but we felt like they're such an important part of the community that it you know, and it, it's not a lot, they're not an everyday thing. You know, we can, we can make that work, uh, if it's once a week, three yards, it's not too bad. Uh, if it was every day and they had a four yard and, you know, wanted to do recycling too, then it'd be a little different story.
Didn't I hear you say once a month?
No, they're once a week.
Oh, we hope for the industrial park.
Yeah, we do. But they're in town.
Right, I know they're in town, but.
So, yeah. And, you know, we don't service them on the electric side, but we do.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's a whole other deal.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we're, I think, pretty content limiting it to that, that little housing area on one ninetieth. Uh, it's pretty close to the route.
But let's just say for the sake of argument that you have, uh, I know there's a, there's a property just on the other side of the airport.
Mm-hmm.
And there's another property on the corner, a mile west of town. And, you know, so where, you know, how do we have, do you just very specifically write an ordinance that only addresses those physical geographic locations and, and or entities?
Well, I think for the rate you say out of town, then you just set your policy is we're only gonna go this far. And there's also other haulers too, I think, um, Stutzman's Refuge is interested in, not Stutzman's, um, Nysley Brothers has expressed an interest in doing some of the rural areas of the county, so maybe I mean, there might be another option. And of course, they can always take their trash to the transfer station.
Other than, than, uh, some folks from, from that area and, and, uh, and ag service, have you had anybody else request service?
Not at this point, no.
So at this point, we're not saying, we're saying yes, but to those folks and, and we're not saying no to anybody.
Haven't said no to anybody.
The other piece too is to maybe look a little bit at, uh, the rate that they were paying.
Hmm.
I mean, you don't want to go under everybody else's rate that's out there in the country. I mean, then you're asking for people.
Well, yeah, then you're begging people to come.
Begging people to come use your.
Come use your service, but yeah, and that's where it's, you know, we gotta be oh, I guess set it in a way that makes sense and.
To me, it still makes sense to cover our costs, but I think to David's point, you know, if, if what we're saying covers our costs is significantly under what they were paying, that doesn't make sense either.
No, that doesn't. Yeah, so we'll, we'll try to balance it out, and they were paying in a weird, they paid like quarterly, so they would pay you know, eighty-five dollars every quarter for residential service or something like that, so. To kind of do a little math, break it out, but yeah, it's not impossible, it just I'm, I guess what I'm asking for is do we want to we want to charge out of town, first of all, it sounds like yes, and then we gotta figure out what that looks like, cost and materials.
So, it sounds like what you're asking the council is you know, are we willing to, to, to serve these people and, and if the answer to that is yes, then do we give you some direction then to go ahead and prepare an ordinance? Is council comfortable with that direction?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, all right.
Hey.
Got your marching orders.
Do.
And then, uh, done, uh, the like, likely, uh, like subject to dumpster rates?
Dumpsters, yeah.
Or policy, excuse me.
Yeah, this is, it's been an issue, um. We actually don't have an official dumpster policy, so that's kind of where we have some issues. Um, we've allowed people to rent dumpsters, you have a, the delivery charge and then they get a pay per dump. Um, what we've had problems with is people holding on to their dumpsters for an extremely long amount of time. Uh, months.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Almost a years, you know, in some cases, almost a year in a long, okay, so. Um, and so they, they don't want to give it up and they always have a reason and you know, so I guess what we'd like to do is, is just put together some structure for that, because we've you know, we've tried to rein that in without a policy, but it's easier if we have some practical limits that are actually in a policy that we can enforce, so. Um, the sanitation director, David Lockwood and, and Karen put together a list of uh, what they would propose for a dumpster policy and so what they, what they came out with was a two week limit, um, from the late date of delivery, um, they're gonna get a pickup date when they rent it. And then, uh, they can extend that if they can, they can do that one time, um, and then we're gonna charge a dump, one dump uh, as a renewal fee for that, uh, because sometimes people take a dumpster and then they don't ever, they don't ever call us to dump it. They'll just have it empty on their lot, and so not only are they taking up a dumpster, but you know, we've, we've basically you know, we're not getting any, any revenue out of that and, and we're still have to deal with it when we have to pick it up, so. Um, we would, we'd have a dumpster delivery fee of fifteen dollars, it's ten dollars now, uh, they recommended kind of going up on that because the time, time and material and effort. Um, there, there's some rules about what's in there too, we have people who load their dumpster up and it'll be completely overflowing. Um, that's not very safe for them, it's not safe for us and it actually damage, can damage our truck, so. Uh, we want to, you know, put it into that and just keep it kind of level. Have everybody cut stuff down, uh, we deliver to the front of, of the property to the street side, we don't, we don't do it on property anymore because we had some issues where when they were delivered, we had some uh, we had some areas torn up by the truck, by the dumpster.
Call.
Yeah, there's been, there were some issues with that, so we stopped, we're not putting it in your driveway, if you want it in your driveway, you have to drag it up there yourself. Uh, but you also have to drag it back if you're gonna do that, so. Um, we want to set that as kind of the rule for that. Um, we want them to call us to dump, there are some people who they have a dumpster and they won't let us know that it's ready to dump, they sort of assume that we're gonna figure out that they're ready for that, so. We wanted to make sure that we've got that, uh, change the, uh, or have the, set the dump rates, uh, for those, yeah, based on the size, and then, uh, we'd like to reserve the right to deny a dumpster rental based on the availability of dumpsters, we do have some that that think that they're entitled to a dumpster even if you don't have them, uh, so they get a little bent out of shape about that, but um, and then also if they're not in good standing with the city, where we would like to be able to deny that, that dumpster rental too, because we feel like if we're already in, in a bad place, banned standing with their utility bills, the likelihood of us recovering the cost on the dumpsters pretty low, so. That's just kind of what they put together, um. You know, we opened that, opened a conversation, if there's anything in there you don't like, you don't think it's fair, uh. You know, we would welcome that conversation and then if, if you wanted to move forward, we would adopt, uh, put together a policy for you guys to adopt. Any of the right stuff would have to go into the ordinance, which we would be talking about with out of town trash anyway, so. Uh, can kind of get a two for there, uh, but the policy would just be a policy, we wouldn't necessarily need to put that into the, uh, city code. So that's, that's, we're just looking for a little direction on that too.
Questions? Comments? Are you comfortable with what's been proposed here?
I am.
Yeah, same here.
Okay, so I guess we're ready when you are to, uh, put that in the form of an ordinance.
Can you?
Okay. So, that takes us to the end of our discussion items. And now we will move and we will, uh, we will move into a land bank meeting, so. I am going to call the, uh, a meeting of the, uh, land bank, city of Hillsborough to order. And we have, uh, three different, uh, land bank set of minutes to approve, did everyone receive copies of the minutes?
Yep.
Were there any questions or comments, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I'll second.
Councilman McCarty moves, Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item two is an offer for the purchase of block two, lot two, Willow Glen addition, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so. Uh, was approached, well, I've been, I've been speaking with, um, Ken and Joe Funk or Patricia Funk, Pat Funk, excuse me. Uh, they both live in Dodge City, they're interested in moving back, um, they're from in the area originally, I know. Funk, Funk's a pretty common name, but I don't know Kenneth, Kenneth Funk, um. So they're interested in, in coming back to town, they've been asking about potential places where they could build a house. Um, they were interested in, in both the lots that we have in Willow Glen, um, so at the end of the day, they found the one that they liked, which is block two lot two, um, I can pull up the map real quick and show you where that is. T that up. So the lot is listed in our land bank property for one thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, can't offer to nine hundred, um, which, you know. Uh, it's not a huge amount of money difference, so Willow Glen, it would be this lot right here. Uh, this is Garvey Schmidt, I think, yeah, and then Wayne, Wayne and Miriam, we're right there, so be right in between there. And then there was another lot over here, but they didn't think that that was quite wide enough for what they were wanting to do. Um, it's been vacant for several years, so we've had it on our books for at least the last three, but I think for longer than that, um. So, you know, I think, I, I think that the value, the price is fair at nine hundred dollars, you know, it's it's less than what's in the land bank, but really the value for us is, is to sell the land and to have a house built. I haven't had a new house built since two thousand seventeen. Um, so that's, you know, where the real value is for the city. So this is in the land bank, if we approve the sale, it's got to close within sixteen. So this is in the land bank. If we approve the sale, it's got to close within sixty days, but the land bank sale has to have a public notice. It's got to be published thirty days before the sale can close. So you got a window in there. Um, anticipating if, if, if approved, we'd close somewhere after, just after Labor Day. So, yeah, we're recommending moving forward with it. I don't see any reason not to, especially if they're planning on building a new house in there.
Are there covenants in, in Willow Glen?
There is, um, well, it's, yeah, there's a homeowners association and there's, but I don't know if it's actually a formal covenant though.
Okay.
The formal covenants is in Carriage Hills.
But in terms of design, we're not talking about anything that needs to be dealt with through the building commission or planning commission, uh, with a overlay or anything like.
No, no, nothing, nothing unique. Stick built house.
Traditional.
Traditional. Stick built house will fit right in with the neighborhood. Billy shoots there, based on what they show.
Any questions? Okay, may want to go ahead and bring Blake back up.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Blake. I forgot to, do you know what we're talking about, the area?
Uh, you said it was in between Garvey and Miriam?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know where they live.
Okay.
I know, I know that property.
Sorry, I should have done a screen share on that. I'm, I apologize.
Good, no biggie.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, um, I would accept a motion to approve the sale of block two, lot two, Willow Glen addition to the Kenneth and Pat Funk uh, family at, in an amount of
Nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred dollars. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries and the sale is approved. And so we will post the notification and, uh, we will close when, uh, we are legally allowed to do so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And now for our city administrators report, and there's a few things on here.
We have to get out of the land bank.
Oh, excuse me. We're gonna, we're gonna adjourn the land bank meeting and then return to city council meeting. Thank you, David. So we are now back in the city council meeting and we are going to allow Mr. Styles to share his city administrators report.
Thank you, sir. So, yeah, it's been pretty busy. Um, alternative housing overlay application. We talked about that at the last meeting. They originally were planning to have a public hearing on that Thursday. Uh, we set a deadline for the, uh, meeting plans to be, or the plans for the house to be, uh, submitted to us by last Friday. Um, that was part of the agreement when we set the, the public hearing on that is they have to have the plan set done. So the planning commission can review that. Uh, they did not submit the plan set in the amount of time that we asked. We're still haven't seen it. Um, and so we have, we've terminated the, well, we canceled the planning commission meeting because there's nothing else on the planning commission meeting, uh, agenda for that, other than that public hearing. So, if they did decide to come back, the next available planning commission meeting would be the twenty-fourth of August. Um, they'd actually, because of the publication requirements for a public hearing, would have to have that into us by the thirty-first of July. Um, so I haven't, haven't heard from the, uh, developer on that. Um, we've tried to contact them again this week and they haven't heard back. So, I don't know. I'm not sure what we're gonna get. Um, Congressman Jake Lutner is gonna be in town on the first, um, gonna be in town in, in Hillsborough from one to three thirty. Uh, we're still trying to set that time. He's got a public event in Marion, uh, at four o'clock. Uh, he's helping to turn tour Barkman Honey and CSI. He had real interest in that. He's been out to Hillsborough Industries before, uh, but was really interested in talking about Barkman Honey and CSI and, uh, entrepreneurship. Obviously, that's a big piece of our puzzle for us and uh, maybe David Janson will come in and talk a little bit about the, the Center for Entrepreneurship and kind of pump that up a little bit. And when Dr. Janson was here last time, he talked that they had a congressional on earmark, what do they call it now? An appropriation, a congressional appropriation that Mr. Lutner, Congressman Lutner had put in for, uh, the redevelopment of the M, yeah, the MJR building. So, um, we're always happy to have our, our congressional delegation in town. Uh, I've honestly not met Mr. Lutner since he's been congressman. Talked to him once when he was a, a state senator. Um, so, you know, we usually get Senator Moran, but we don't, I haven't seen Lutner yet. So, um, happy to have him here. If you're interested in coming to the, to the, uh, tour, you're more than welcome to again, August first. Uh, I think it's gonna start at one, probably at CSI, but we'll have to confirm that. Kind of working with the congressman's office to make sure we get that all nailed down. Uh, CBG for childcare. So, uh, we did get awarded the six hundred thousand dollar community development block grant for the childcare center. So that's awesome. Uh, we're gonna have that grant contract on the, uh, agenda for next week. Uh, it works a little differently than we originally discussed. So we're, we're working kind of through that. Money has to come, to come to the city and it basically has to be a city project. Uh, which was not exactly how we envisioned that going from the get-go. All the money for it would obviously still be the money that's been raised. Uh, but in order to attack, use these funds, we have to use, run it as a city project. We basically just set it up in its own kind of world and its own account. But, um, we'll have to discuss that a little bit more when we talk about the contract. Rosemary and Crystal will be here from Ranson and we'll kind of go through that a little bit more. Uh, airport roof. I dig my airport, I tell you. Um, so, yeah, that, that Mahaney's been out and looked at it. We're still waiting for a response back from them as to how much it's gonna cost to fix the roof. Uh, when that sixty-five mile an hour wind came through in July fourteenth, it ripped about it. It's about a thirty foot section. It actually broke some of the rafters. Um, so it got underneath it and got it pretty good. Um, had our insurance agent out there looking at it with us at the time and, uh, we haven't, we haven't put a claim in yet. We're not sure how much it's gonna be. You know, we've got that wind inhale deductible, so, uh,
Which is?
That's ten thousand per incident. And we've got a couple other roofs, but I don't know if we're gonna hit ten thousand. So, uh, this roof is basically just trusses with tin on it. Um, so there's not a whole lot to it. Honestly, there's no decking. There's no, there's no, nothing fancy about it. It's a plain tin box, basically. Um, but that also begs the question, what do we want to do with the airport? Because there's a lot of, potentially a lot of needs out there, but it does not, it struggles financially. Um, and so, you know, what, where's the balance in making capital investments there versus what we get out of it? Um, you know, I'm not necessarily ready to say we should get rid of the airport or anything like that, but, you know, we're gonna have to have some conversations about what that looks like. Um, if we want to operate it and want it to be, uh, a well-used facility, we may have to put more money in it than we're getting out of it.
Was there a plane in there when it was?
Uh, no, actually, the plane that was in the, in the spot where the roof came off was was, uh, moved out a week or two before for not paying its rent. There's another issue we have with the hangers out there. People don't always pay their rent on a timely schedule. Um, so they were not evicted, but they were, removed that plane, uh, just in time for the roof to get ripped off on it. So, lucky for them, I guess, worked out pretty good. But, uh, we do have three planes in there right now. Um, one of them, I, I think most of them have actually left to, to other grounds while we figure out what we're gonna do with the building then. So, that's a tough one. Airports, airports, one of those things I just don't, don't know how to, I don't know how to, to, to manage that and make it generate enough money to cover its costs. So it's, it's one of those things that we're not, we're never gonna sell enough fuel to make it pay for it. And do you make the rents high enough to, to replace the hangar and then no one will want to rent it? So, anyway, that's something to be thinking about. Um, we'll have more information on the roof once we get a proposal back from Mahaney. Uh, splash pad dedication, that's this Friday at noon. Parents, teachers, it's kind of co-hosting and, and doing some activities too. We're gonna have, uh, ribbon cutting and dedication at that, uh, event. We're also a hot dog lunch for everybody. So come on out. Uh, it's gonna be fun time.
I ran into Jacob Sabayan at the demo derby and he sounds like he's got a few things from his company that he's gonna hand out to the kiddos as well. And so he's got some floaties, some things.
Sweet.
Yeah.
That's cool. If you walked by, uh, you might not have seen it. I don't know if anybody walked by it. Uh, we got the rule sign out here in the hallway. I gotta put that up too. Uh, and then we're gonna have some, some sod laid down and finish off a few things and got the shade sails up. Uh, yeah, so it's, it's looking good. It's, it's again, being highly utilized all the time. It seems like there's somebody in there. Um, can't put.
Have we addressed, uh, the concern that Ronald brought up?
I don't know if we've got it coded or not, but we were, I think we, I have to double check that. I don't know. We, we were trying to find a coding that would actually adhere to it, track something out that didn't work. So, um, we are trying to find something to get that taken care of though. Uh, so come on out Friday noon. It'll be a good time. Uh, bring your bathing suits. It's gonna be a hot one. Uh, Jost Hall, the same day, if you want to stick around till four o'clock, four thirty. Uh, Jost Hall will be doing, they're doing a dedication there too. So, uh, ribbon cutting tours, that's the new dormant table. Just Jost Hall, that's what it's called. Uh, four thirty, that same Friday. Uh, we've got the monthly financials attached there. I got the dashboard report done, but I didn't get it sent out this afternoon. I got tied up with, uh, rec commission stuff. Uh, also have the June bill for KPP. June's not quite the high one. The next few ones will be much higher. Uh, that's kind of how our, our system works there. Uh, housing assessment's been done by Wichita State. It's nearly complete. I got the draft report and sent it back for a few revisions. Hope to have that for the second meeting in August. Uh, some really interesting stuff in there. Probably the most interesting thing that stood out to me, there is one hundred and eighty-one housing units. That's not necessarily houses, but housing units. So it could be apartments, could be anything that are unoccupied in the City of Hillsborough. Uh, sixteen percent of our housing stock is unoccupied, uh, vacant. Uh, now you'd expect normal, normal amount, uh, you know, as houses kind of turn over and people are moving. You expect there to be, you know, a certain amount that are vacant, but sixteen percent seems really high to me.
Is this a, is this a, based on a physical inspection?
Well, it's based on, uh, yeah, it's based on the data, so public available data sources. So it's, it's gonna have census data and some other things, so whatever.
But it's not anybody going around.
No one knocking on doors.
Putting eyes on them.
Right, yeah. So, but even if, you know, even if it's plus or minus ten percent of that, that's still pretty significant. Significant number of houses that are vacant. Don't know what we do about that, other than let's try to get some of those vacant ones back on market or back in the circulation. Uh, following up, three eleven North Lincoln's been demolished by Dahlke Construction. So that one, that lot's looking pretty good. Uh, Circle C is planning on being in town the first week of August to seal the downtown area. Uh, it's gonna be weather dependent. Uh, we got the pool rededication, uh, or dedication, I guess, to the Doris Dahlke Family Aquatic Center on August tenth at two P M. Uh, and then just a reminder, we'll be at the office from the second to the fourth of August. So, that's it. That's all I got.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Styles? Okay, hearing none, we'll now come to our final public comment opportunity. Uh, I don't see anybody from the public online and everybody here in the room's had a chance. So we will, uh, move on to council comments. Councilman, bye.
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
Okay. Councilman McCarty.
Nothing.
Councilman Lowen?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, we had the electrical apartment share recently, and then we had a windstorm. And I was just wondering where the, where we are in the tree branch removal of power lines. Is that still going on? Yeah, are we staying up with that?
Yeah, staying up with that, maybe not as much as we'd like to, but yeah, it's kind of a continuous process. Yeah.
And a, and scheduled replacement of power poles, are we still doing that? We're, I just, those are just things I thought.
Yeah, I know. Those, those are both the good, great, good questions. We actually, uh, just got some power pole. We had to order some more poles. Um, we're still waiting on transformers. Hmm, and a couple spots. So as we get stuff in, we do schedule those and get them done, but still kind of slow on getting stuff.
Terms of, uh, in terms of, uh, branch cleanup. What was the plan again on that? Just information? People are to set it out at the curb, branches out at the curb?
Uh, we haven't, yeah, we did that. We did one round through town after.
Had some more the other day.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have one scheduled yet for that. We actually have half the staff are on vacation right now. Uh, so we don't have one scheduled, but, um, you know, if we have, if we have a large amount of branches out there, we, we can put them at the curb and we can get them. Uh, we just don't have a date put on the calendar yet.
Probably let's, let's look and see when we can do. Do a second round. Because it certainly got our neighborhood, not, not necessarily myself or you, but, uh, our neighbor down the street lost their big blue spruce.
It's a whole blue spruce tree. That's a huge tree.
Yeah, that was a big one. I saw a group of people out there dealing with it when I came to the meeting. So that was nice. All right. Any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a good night, guys.